Being seven o'clock, I'd like to open the planning board meeting for April sixth twenty twenty-two. First up, we are public hearing for revised zoning bylaw by amending the use table in definition within the current zoning bylaw. Pursuant to that, general law chapters forty, section five, the Cheltenham Planning Board will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April sixth twenty twenty-two at seven P M. The Cheltenham Planning Board Office in the Gregory Seem, the County Building, thirty-seven Main Street, Charlton, Mass. And via Zoom, I propose a to amend the Cheltenham Zone bylaw by amending the use table and the definitions with in within the current zoning bylaw. Complete Texas Proposals of Bill with the Board Office in Town Park Office for Public Express during regular business hours. Any person interested or wishing to be heard on a zoning proposal should appear at the time and place designated. We have participation, H T P S colon backslash backslash zoom dot U S backslash two one one two nine three two two five seven. Meaning I do two one one two nine three two two five seven phone access one six four six five five eight eight six five six. All right.
Okay, everybody, I don't know where we want to start here because I know. Being at least it's definitely pretty thorough. It's also done this pretty thorough review. So do you want to start on comments on the document you got from Gabe and go from there?
Yeah, so is everyone, everyone in attendance has been involved in the process? I'm just like, there's not too many people known from the public or?
We have one member from the public, Lori Gaiden, who is very much involved in create our creation of our bylaws and so.
So, okay, okay, so. Okay, so just for, for her information. Yeah, there's basically three main changes. They're, they're all pretty extensive, but we're at, we're adding and removing a bunch of definitions in section two point one. Similarly, changing some of these zoning district names. To or changing agricultural to rural R sixty. And then on top of that. Changing, adding, you know, to the use table, a bunch of, a bunch of the new definitions and some, some that were missing. And also modifying a lot of the, a lot of the requirements, so. And this is, you know, we've been back and forth with the board on this for, for a while now. Just for, just for your information, so.
Well, Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Kurt. I would suggest maybe in an organized fashion since everybody here have, you know, has the document, you've seen the document, maybe we just go through it.
Page by page.
Thank you.
Does that make the most sense there?
Yes.
You have a copy.
I got a copy. I won't wait on. Oh, I don't have another copy.
I have one.
Yeah.
Um, so do you want me to lead that or does the, does the chair want to lead that?
You can go ahead, Gabe.
Okay, and um, do you want me to, do you want me to screen share as well, would that help?
Yeah, I guess if anyone's on Zoom and they want to see it.
Sure.
That makes sense.
Okay.
Yep.
Okay, great. Okay, I'm gonna zoom in. How's that look?
Perfect.
Okay, so um, like I said, this first chunk, we're looking at section two point one uses and structures. Uh, so this first page, we're not adding or removing anything, so I'm gonna move to page.
Okay. You went item one and item two and every other thing we have, it's A and B.
Okay.
Under, yeah, accessory.
Okay. I will make that change.
Long term, is that easier for you?
Thank you.
I apologize for that oversight. But thanks for the heads up. So then looking at the second page. We are removing the original animal or veterinary hospital definition. And then adding a new animal or veterinary hospital definition. The primary purpose of that is basically to ensure that a veterinary hospital going in has the proper licensure from the Commonwealth. That's like the main difference.
Okay, uh, go back to, you don't have to go back, but Kurt, are you okay with accessory building and accessory use?
And none of that has changed, so.
You're okay with it?
Thank you, Brad.
Okay. So yeah, the main change with animal or veterinary hospital is to add just language regarding licensure. Then we added an animal kennel definition. Which basically, you know, is defining animal kennel. As, you know, a lot with structures or pens where you would have three or more household pets boarded, bred or sold. Because that was a definition that was missing.
And that three or more should probably be changed according to the Charlton bylaw. Four dogs or less, you can have a kennel.
Okay.
Kennel license. So I don't know if you want to change that to four or more dogs.
Yeah.
Five or more dogs.
Yeah, I guess.
Yeah.
Start to five, from five to ten.
That makes sense.
In the N in animal, that's, the A is also.
Yeah, I saw, yeah, I saw it was bolded. I got that, thank you. And then we added an agriculture definition, which was previously not in the bylaws. I believe, I, I believe that those pulled, you know, most of these bylaws, I don't have the, the full list, but they were pulled from other towns' existing zoning bylaws, such as the city of Worcester and then other towns in the region that had similar definitions and obviously have been, you know, probably modified by the board at some point.
Don't have an agricultural zone anymore. But you need to change that on the other thing. You still have it listed as A, it should be the R sixty. But on this page here, we don't have, we're not calling anything zoned agriculture anymore, do we need this definition?
Well, we still vowing it.
Yeah, okay.
Under the right to farm.
Okay.
Yeah.
Is everybody happy with the definition?
Yep.
Yeah, so in another, you'll see, but I, we do address sort of the, the R sixty, R sixty has its own change definition when we get to the district definitions. So then, as was requested at the last meeting, I pulled an auction gallery definition. I believe, it's from a town in the region, but the original definition was a business offering goods for sale at auction to the public. And then I added excluding the regular sale of automobiles, motorcycles, recreational vehicles and similar vehicles, boats or light industrial or farm equipment. So there was a concern of basically how to define out like an auto auction from the auction gallery definition, so I, I hope that satisfies that. Just so it's clear that it's not for, you know, basically motor vehicles of various types.
Kurt giving us a thumbs up, so that's.
Great. Um, so then we have automatic teller machine or A T M. Which basically is just a normal definition of automatic teller machine. And then the, the main concern from the planning board was that we wanted to make sure it was, you know, we weren't, if, if you have like a grocery store that they don't need a permit to install a, an A T M. So in the, in the definition, in the bylaws or in the, the use regulations, we basically, in the def, you know, in the, in the descriptor, we just, we basically say that this would be for an A T M that is separate from an existing commercial building. So that would, you know, if you had a mall, you, you know, or what, or a grocery store, you wouldn't have to pull a permit to put in an A T M in, inside your building or like, you know, right adjacent to the outside.
Like it's standing on.
So you're looking at capturing freestanding.
Yeah.
What about? Drive up attached to the bank. You have, right, I'm just, I'm not saying it's right or wrong, right? But you do talk about drive-through in relation to restaurants. Right, so probably would be covered in your site plan because most that sort of stuff is probably covered by a bank. It would probably be covered by a site plan, so you would address traffic. So yeah, if you're dealing with this as a standalone kiosk in the middle of the park, in the middle of the park.
Yeah. All right, and then um, we have bed and breakfast. So that is defined as in the residential districts or for dwellings in non-residential districts, the renting of rooms and furnishing of meals for not more than four persons shall be permitted, provided that the same is conducted and managed by a resident owner of the premises.
Well, I have a comment on that, resident owner. Are you saying, are you saying a resident comma owner, there's no comma there, or are you saying owner?
I believe the intention is that the owner of the building lives there as well.
And I would, I would suggest you take the word resident out.
Owner occupied.
That, 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 that sounds.
Yeah, somehow.
Because I can, I can, oh, I can rent a house, right? And be a resident of the house, but I am not the owner of that house.
We could say resident and owner, I think the concern is, you know, we don't want, you know, we want the, I guess the idea was that the person who's running it lives there and owns it, so we could say resident and owner.
But would it be better to say somehow is conducted by an owner occupied property or something to that effect? So that it's crystal clear that you have to own it and live there.
Yeah.
Because I see how Kurt, you know, somebody could.
We could say, we, we could say it provided that the, the bill, like the, provided that the building is owner occupied.
Right.
Okay. I'll change that.
And that prevents a company coming in and buying buildings.
Right. And I think the idea also is that if, you know, if you're looking at Airbnbs, you know, you're not, again, having a similar situation where the people don't live there. Which has been a concern with those, but you know, you're not overly restricting it.
Right.
So then we remove the boarding, onto the next page, to page three. We removed the boarding house definition. We removed the daycare center definition, and there's a few definitions inserted that are kind of related to the daycare center, some of which may come later in the document. But we, we, you know, added a daycare center definition. That basically defines it as, you know, they're children, they're not in the same family and it's not, you know, non-residential care during the day, away from their parents. And then we also, you know, added an adult daycare center definition. Which basically. You know, it's, it's for adults. But I think that was just, we wanted to add that adult daycare center definition. If it came up, and currently, I think in the use regulations, we have both of them as the same restrictions by zone, but you know, obviously they're separate, so that could change in the future pretty easily. So then we also added drive-through uses, a retail or consumer service use of land or a building in which the business transacted is conducted by a customer or client from within their automobile, does not include curbside pickup using standard parking spaces or automobile repair and service stations. So I think that would satisfy, you know, the concern about banking and A T Ms. Because it, you know, could be any consumer use, it doesn't have to require that there's a person can, you know, doing the drive-through. So onto the next page. So we removed the old, we removed the old family daycare home definition. And then added a new family daycare home definition. And so basically, you know, the difference between this and the normal daycare center. It's basically the size of the facility. And so it's for children under seven years of age or under sixteen if they have special needs. And it's, you know, in total below six children being cared for on the premises. And it could be something that could be conducted in a home, like as a home occupation.
Please, if you have something.
Yeah, real quick, going back to drive-through uses, is that gonna need to be on line in the zoning table? Or is that just to describe it?
I believe it's, it's in the zoning table, I believe, yeah.
Yeah, we have like restaurants, drive-through versus restaurants that are like fast food type restaurant.
Yeah, so.
Sit-down restaurants.
So yeah, I mean.
So the whole zoning table is just not attached to this packet, so I just, where it showed up and where drive-throughs are allowed, that's all. That's what I was.
Yeah, yeah, so any, any of the definitions that we're introducing, those should all be reflected in the use table edits as well.
Okay.
So, yeah.
Because we, we called it up in something later, but I don't think it's in any particular zone. It's, it's in here at the end.
Yeah, I've got the first page.
Oh. On my category five. You have.
I try. It is, I have the first page twice.
Oh, so I, I'm pulling it up on the, I'm pulling it up on the screen. And I can zoom in further, it's in section five, so it should be reflected in the last packet I sent, if anyone has that handy from the last meeting. Currently, we just have it as drive-through uses, it's section five, you know, item L. And it's not permitted in any district except in C B and I G where it is a special permit.
So then audit, I'm just comparing that, Gabe, to the automated teller, the T.
Yeah. So that is, that's P in every district except for, you know, the R sixty, R forty and R S E.
So that might be kind of what Kurt's bringing it up is.
Yeah.
Thank you.
Um, so I think we, we specify that it's separate from an existing commercial structure, so you know, if you had a bank with a drive-through, that would fall under drive-through uses. You could also have a walk-up, you could have a walk-up A T M. You could have a walk-up A T M like in, like, you know, like a kiosk in a, in like a, with like an overhang and that would fall under A T M, not under drive-through uses.
Right. This is the separate, one parking lot, big A T M machine in the middle of a parking lot.
Right, right. Versus drive-through uses, which.
Can a bank or restaurant be located in neighborhood business? If so, drive-through should be allowed, there is S P as well, I believe. I understand why not, I understand why not putting it in village because of smaller lot size, but I believe neighborhood business has a larger lot size that can accommodate the traffic flow for a drive-through.
Yeah, that's, I mean, I, that, it's up to the board to, uh, to make, to make that decision.
And B, I would be an S P. Not that we have a lot of neighborhoods.
Yeah.
Because I think Kurt, I mean, I don't think any of those use, I don't think any of that has changed, so currently it's not allowed in N B.
And, and our banks already, but is there a hard fast reason why it's not? Or was it just missed when we originally did this?
I gotta remember this table is built in nineteen eighty-seven. There's a lot of things that have come, come into play.
Yeah, R S E, so banks are allowed in, in the small enterprise R S E. But then drive-throughs not, so fast food restaurants are not allowed in V or N B. And yeah, it's more, you're kind of, it's more the fast food restaurants that would have the drive-through, but. Or a bank. Or bad.
So, you know, and I'm, I'm not trying to drive the planning board meeting here, but I would stay by going through this.
Yes.
Right, and then get to the table and then look at each line in the table.
Thanks for pulling us back on track.
So I will go.
Pretty quick.
I will go back to page three. Because we do, we do have twenty pages to get through, so. So yeah, back to, yeah, family daycare home. We, uh.
How do we get down here? Back up a little bit.
Yeah.
I don't mean to interrupt you, but I got a energy storage.
Yes.
There.
Nothing's changed there since two years ago.
This, these, we don't say battery here, this is not including battery, battery is separate.
No, but can be.
So the question came up, should we have energy slash battery, just so it's clear that's included.
Well, it says called a fueler leader or battery, it says it right in the, in the, in the definition. I think it's good the way it is because it opens it up to any future technologies that can, that may not be called battery or.
I tried to.
That is true.
Yeah.
Think as I could.
No, that's, that's.
Because everything's changing.
It's a good definition and I know Lori looked a lot of the energy storage options and if we were going through this, you know, from the buyer's side that I played on at the time. These are almost everything and anything that you can store energy. Unless there's some new, really, really new thing, right? Kinetic is gravity, and it's gravity storage system, there's compressed with compressed gas, compressed air storage systems, and that's covered in this definition, so I think it's a really good definition.
I do have a question though, further on, on one of the proposals. You have commercial storage and residential battery storage.
This.
Want me to wait till we get there?
Yeah.
Okay. It used to be. Okay.
So yeah. And then we remove the old fast food restaurant definition. I believe we have a dining or, yeah, I think, I think that definition gets replaced, but, uh, because it basically limited fast food to the, to just the drive, it was basically a drive-through definition that didn't include other potential businesses. Yeah, so now we have food service establishment and food service establishment, fast food slash drive-through. Food service establishment basically covers any type of restaurant. Where your, you know, the food is being served on the premises or elsewhere or, uh, you know, for, for consumption on the premises. With or without charge, that could include like a soup kitchen or something like that. And then we have a fast food slash drive-through. Where, uh, a substantial portion of the food is prepared in advance of the designated order for consumption on or off the premises, which provides for food pickup by the public without the need to leave the car. So I think, yeah, we're basically, you know, defining that as, you know, if it's going to be taken off the premises, like a more casual situation with, with less seating and that sort of thing. So I think. And I believe I pulled those definitions from Worcester. It's pretty, uh, I think it's, it's a pretty good line. Because again, like I think we discussed this, but, you know, I think when you get into like defining counter service and, you know, how much seating there is and all that, like it's a little too, I think this, you know, when we're talking, it's just talking about it's primarily for off the premises. And it's being prepared in advance. Because that kind of gets it like the fast part of the fast food. So then we have this green infrastructure definition. The range of measures that use plant or soil systems permeable surfaces, stormwater harvest and reuse, infiltrate or evaporate, transpare stormwater and reduce flows to sewer systems or to surface waters. I don't believe that's addressed in the use table, but I think that was requested by the planning board as a definition. Then we have two group, group residence definitions. Which is basically like a group home, group residence and group residence limited. Essentially, the, the distinction between those is one would be a group home for people who can take care of themselves and then the other would be for people who can't, you know, who are not capable of self-preservation. So you're, you're talking about, you know, different, different needs of the, uh, of the, of the residents. And then we removed the old heavy industrial uses and we replaced that with, just because, because this one was basically like very specific definitions of heavy industrial and was, and as you can see, we get to, um, you know, this definition of heavy industrial that we replaced it with basically focuses on the different pollutants that would be generated by the facility, so you're talking about like noise, vibrations, smoke, dust and odor. You know, as opposed to, you know, focusing on the, what's being produced, it's more about what's the effect, you know, on the neighborhood and on, on butters.
Okay, Mr. Chairman, go ahead, Kurt. So in this definition, you, it references light manufacturing criteria set forth above. Well, there is no light manufacturing criteria set forth above. There is light industrial that you talk about on the next page.
Yeah, we can change that to light industrial criteria. And I can say that, I can say self, set forth like elsewhere in the section. Thank you.
Maybe capitalize it like a heading, Gabe.
Yeah. Thank you. So then we remove the, uh, the hotel motel definition. Because it was, you know, again, it was like, the bed and breakfast definition was for people. Hotel would basically be anything above four people. For transient overnight or extended occupancy divided into separate units and having a common entrance or individual exterior entrances, which would also, you know, include, like a motel would have the exterior entrances, including an inn motel and motor inn, but not including a boarding house, lodging house or rooming house. So basically like excluding S R O, single residence occupancies, things like that. So, you know, your basic mo, hotel or motel. Moving on, so then we have the light.
Yep, go right ahead. Height of building, can we change that to building height so that it falls with the rest of the building definitions? No change to the tax.
Take that definition, say building height, Gabe, and move to the B.
Yeah.
Rest of buildings.
Okay.
Thank you.
Gabe, can I ask on the, the hotel, this individual exterior entrances kind of jumps out at me as more of a motel than a hotel.
Yeah, so I think it's just to have a broad, because it says later it includes a motel or inn or motor, motor inn or mo, yeah. So I think it's to include, just to have like a broad hotel definition. You could split it into the motel and talk about the, you know, talk about the exterior entrances. But, um, it was already a single definition as hotel slash motel. But I think the main, the, the main focus on the board was not focusing on like the num, the, you know, the number of occupants and stuff kind of overcomplicated it.
Right, I'm just.
Do you want to separate hotel from motel?
No, I'm just saying if we put exterior entrances and like, oh, mine doesn't have exterior.
Both.
Yeah, so it's, it says common entrances and exterior entrances.
Individual exterior entrances, so common entrance would be.
Oh, okay, I'm sorry, I read that wrong.
Yeah.
I'm with you. Perfect.
So. Uh, so I moved, I moved building height, I struck the old definition and moved, moved it to the Bs. So, uh. So, uh.
We just, we have, um. It's, it's old, we didn't change it, but institutional and.
Philanthropic.
Um, you see, you have spaces there, like under.
Yeah.
Circle societies, can't we just push that all up and why is there a break in there?
Yeah, I can, I can modify that, um, for, I don't know if that would qualify as like a change for a warrant or if that would just be a formatting thing when the new bylaws are done.
I'm, I'm just trying to catch everything right now.
Oh, no, no, I appreciate it. Um, I can, I'll change that. I just don't know how to mark that since it's not a. But I'll change that, I can change that after the meeting.
Okay, thank you.
It's, I mean, it does really hurt dandy.
No, it's, it's, I'm trying to get.
Format itself, not really, you need.
Is that in the use table?
What, what?
Uh, institutional philanthropic uses.
No.
No, but we do have these at the store, you know, yeah.
Yeah. Okay.
So while you're talking about institutional, what is the super script one at the end of therapy and administrative?
I've got that circle too. It's a nice big bold one.
I'll pull up the bylaws.
What was it, something in the bylaws or?
Yeah. Let me pull it up. So. Not seeing it in here. It's under institutional and philanthropic.
Two hundred.
Yeah, that's, that one is not in.
Oh.
Yeah. It's, yeah, so it, it refers to, it's like a solar thing that it links to in the, in, in E code. So, as we're formatting it, we could always just remove that.
Good idea.
I think that's an, I think, I think that's an, I think that's an error. Okay, um, so then, uh, back to, uh, on page seven. Um, looking at light industrial and light manufacturing, we struck the old definition and put the light industrial definition in line with the heavy industrial definition. Um, where we're basically focusing on produces no airborne emissions, objectionable noise, glare, odor, vibration, smoke or dust associated with the industrial operation. Um, where we're basically focusing on what, what the, what the negative outputs of the facility would be for the, for the butters in the neighborhood. Um, then we struck light manufacturing, uh, struck la- lodging house, yeah.
Formatting, uh, again, under that one's sitting there in the, um, it's not one and two, it should be A and B.
Okay. Yeah, I think that's just how it formatted on my, uh, I, I can change that. I think that's just how it formatted when I pasted it. Um, so then we also struck lodging house. Which was, it was just a very weird definition. Um, and I think the, the bed and breakfast hotel split, I think covers everything the board was interested in allowing. Um, we added, along with green infrastructure, the low impact development definition. Um, I think that was something that's not in the use table, but is addressed, uh, elsewhere in the bylaws. Um, so then we, uh, we had a manufactured home definition. Um, where basically, uh, we were looking at the distinction between like manufactured home, recreational vehicle and trailer. Um, where manufactured home is basically a prefabricated permanent house. Um, that has to, you know, that has to be in line with these federal standards. Um, and you'll see it later, but you know, RV is a, you know, a recreational vehicle and then a trailer would be uh, like that can move under its own power and then a trailer is something that can be, you know, towed. Um, so then moving on, um, the next couple pages are marijuana definitions that um, were pulled from, from Worcester. Basically, you, you have a lot of marijuana uses in the existing use table. I wanted to make sure we covered those and also any potential future, uh, you know, uses that might come up. I think it's wise just to have these in the bylaws, so then, um, you know, if you want to introduce them or if it comes up in a hearing, um, you have something to go off of, because this is from Worcester, you know, I feel confident that this is in line with, you know, what the state, Worcester has a number of marijuana, uh, facilities and I think it would, you know, just puts you in line with, you know, what a town with, with more of these facilities is, you know, setting themselves up for.
So you currently have some definitions within the marijuana bylaw, section two hundred five twenty-two. So.
Okay.
I, there's only three definitions there and so if you're going to keep these definitions, then you need to, to look at how they play with the, that section. My, my recommendation to the board is, is that since the Cannabis Control Commission nine thirty-five CMR thoroughly defines everything with marijuana. That you might want to just reference that document, marijuana as marijuana and its definitions is defined by the Cannabis Control. Because getting, you know, conflict with those definitions will. Who am I?
Okay. I think, yeah, I think that, that, I think that simplifies it, um, and I can, I can condense this, so, you know, we have the marijuana definition and like for any other, like see the, you know, talk to the Cannabis Control Commission. Cause I, also those definitions are prob- you know, those things change, are in our influx.
And, and.
You're going to change them and it is drastic.
So if we say that we're, once with them and they change it, whatever changes they make, we don't have to do it again.
Right. Okay, I think, yeah.
What about the bylaws that, did you mention the other paragraph in the bylaws that mentioned?
I, I, what I would suggest to the board is, because we're dealing with a portion of the bylaw for this, tell me that you, you know, put in definitions, let's just deal with definition and leave what's in the other bylaw alone until we get to that.
Ignore that for the moment.
Sorry. Don't pay attention.
Right, right, yeah.
So, so, so for the time being, do you want me to strike, uh, these marijuana definitions?
Right, if you, you gotta have something in there to reference.
The nine thirty-five.
Yeah, the cannabis, um.
Nine thirty-five, being a five point zero, zero.
You don't want to go after the, the whole bylaws while we're starting up.
In use of definition from the.
Just, I'm, I'm trying to keep it simple, just say marijuana refer to cannabis control definitions.
Yeah.
Nine thirty.
Nine thirty-five CMR.
Period.
Okay.
We just, yeah.
Marijuana definitions and facilities or something, yeah, just.
Okay.
The Cannabis Control Commission covers everything, so.
Okay, so I'll strike all these and I'll, I'll write, I'll put in a new definition, thank you. I think this will simplify things.
Hmm.
All right, um, moving on, um, again, we have the mobile home. Um, which is basically like, you know, what, you know, trailer, um, we also define trailer, um, like a trailer building like for a, yeah, so known as a travel trailer, travel, travel coach. Um, but basically where it doesn't have an, an engine of its own.
Can I ask a, a question that, that trailer? Do we have another definition for a storage unit trailer?
So yeah, we currently have trailer, which is an old definition for wheeled roofed vehicle without motor power, designed to be drawn by motor vehicle and to be used for habitation, business or recreational use. So I think that would cover you for like a temporary tra- trailer. Um, for like, you know, if there was like construction or.
Right. I'm thinking of how about a container type of.
Not an office trailer, but a storage trailer.
Storage.
Wow, okay, so.
And.
As Gene said, talks about wheels.
Yeah.
Okay, so a conex container.
Yeah.
Okay. It's a shed.
Is it otherwise defined in the bylaws somewhere? Because the bylaws say you can't have more than container on your property or something.
Doesn't say that. By law, wow, you're diving in a rabbit hole.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Okay, so, so a conex can, a, a, a structure, right? Look at your definition of structure and build it. You know, an assemblage of materials to provide shelter. Okay, is a, is a conex container assemblage of material to provide shelter. Yes. Okay, so I, you know, from, from the two hats I wear over here, right, zoning and building, what's the difference between that conex container?
But, but not for human habitation.
Well, they're not, they're not applicable for human habitation.
Right.
They don't meet exiting requirements, they don't have windows, they don't have bathroom facilities.
So it's not a structure.
Okay.
No, it, because the, the structure definition says human habitation or use. Um, and it also includes like, it says such as building, bridge, tower, tank, tunnel, flagpole. So it's, it's sort of broadly anything that is, you know, it's kind of philosophical, but it's pretty broad.
It would be habitation or use, so.
Right, you can't, you can't live in a flagpole.
But I mean, you could use, you know, a conex right, containers for storage, not necessarily habitation.
Okay, so a building is an str- a structure enclosed with exterior walls or firewalls built erected and framed of any combination of any materials wherever portable or fixed, having a roof to form a structure, to form shelter for a person, animals or property. So it's a conex connect.
It's a building, that's a building, not a structure.
Yeah, all, all buildings are structures, not all structures are buildings.
Yeah, okay.
So now, to, to jump into the next part, how do we deal with it? Well, I deal with them currently as their shed. There is some.
Pre-assembled shed.
If, if you go to so-and-so farms and get a pre-assembled shed and they bring it on a trailer and they roll it off onto some concrete blocks or whatever, what's the difference?
Yeah.
Now, if you want to regulate them or provide allowances for them to be used for temporary uses without being considered a building that needs a permit and zoning, and that's another discussion.
But as a shed, it still needs to meet zoning, it still needs to be setback.
Yes.
Still needs to meet criteria.
Yeah.
But no permit.
Yes.
No permit, you have to have a permit to, to, to build it, yeah.
Then you run into the problem, when is it become permit?
That, that, that's what I was suggesting to you in another discussion, maybe you want to talk about, you know, whether or not we provide an exception that says that they're used for, so on a construction site, they happen all the time and, and I don't.
Yeah.
You know.
But they have to be removed after the construction.
Right, okay, but when, when they come for a hundred and eighty days because a pot, a name brand, I'm sorry, I'm using a name brand that's sitting in somebody's driveway, well, I know that that is a temporary use that I'm, you know, not, if somebody complains about it, but say, it's, it's, it's temporary. Guy puts a, a conex container in his front driveway, okay, now it's a shed. But I'm only keeping it for a little while.
Right.
But there's some people that will purchase them, instead of buying a shed, they'll purchase a conex container to store, right, stuff in.
And I treat those as sheds, the question is, is.
Can't we regulate size?
No.
No.
No, because, no, because the zoning statute can, you can regulate size, you can regulate overall bulk of a property. But you couldn't, you can't regulate the size of a structure. When you're zoning, except for setbacks and total lot coverage.
Total lot coverage covers that, so they can't cover the entire lot.
No, but they can come pretty close to it, I mean.
Yeah, right.
You get two or three on a lot, you know, you have two in your front yard, one on your side yard.
Uh, there'd be, I mean, it's like having three sheds, right?
Other than they're ugly.
Wow, that's your perspective.
And that is true, that is my perspective.
That's the problem.
We hired the teacher.
So there is no, there is no doubt where I'm coming from.
I want the team. I tend to agree with you, I, I do, but it's a slippery slope.
Buildings on your property other than coverage.
Too many people are watching.
Yeah. I, I agree with you, though.
Wait until it hits tomorrow.
So I, I suggest that this is a, a complex topic.
Yes, it is.
This is the rabbit hole you were referring to.
Yeah.
Yeah, because there's no meter that starts the clock running, now it's beyond temporary, yeah.
What if you move six inches?
Yeah. Okay.
So, Mr. Boyer, people, people come to me and say it's temporary and I said, you have one of those big forklifts that you're going to pick it up and move it with, and they go, uh, okay, so then.
Couple of two ten checks and some rollers, I'll move it.
Yeah, I mean, yeah, I get involved in that discussion, so that's why I just, so let's.
So there is also a, there is also a definition for temporary construction office, which I think is probably like the most you know, in a, in a commercial context, the most likely application, you know, outside of like a, you know, using it as like a dumpster or whatever.
Um, the simplest solutions, leave alone, and you make sure they have their current.
I'd like Kirk to deal with it like he always does.
Well, we're trying to help Kirk, so he can deal with it across the board.
I swear to. Still on the first public hearing, they're going on definitions in the zone bylaws.
The fad. You.
All right, so the discussion was had, it's certainly a, a broad topic that could go into some other things that might be better suited. Another topic.
Okay.
Let's put it on the list for future date, though.
Tomorrow.
After we get to this.
Yes, let's, that's, that key game here.
Restrictive about a lot of other things, except this, which is probably more.
Nothing coming.
Frequently.
Okay, what are we on now, restaurants?
Yeah, we're on restaurant, so, uh, we struck the old definition, um, and basically made a restaurant. Um, you know, a food service establishment, uh, where they're served at a table or counter and consumed on the, on the premises. Um, then we added racetrack, um, which could include motorized vehicle racing, horse racing or dog racing and takes place outdoors. Um, then we added recreational vehicle, um, which again, we're talking about this trailer, RV, mobile home thing. Um, where basically it can move under its own power and is a temporary, uh, you know, use. Uh, moving on. And the final, um, the final definition we introduced is yard sale. Um, where the main concern with that was to regulate a yard sale from happening on an ongoing basis. Um, so it has to be over five items, you're not just like putting a few things out. Um, in, inside or outside the building. Uh, per, and, you know, can be conducted on the premises by the owner or the tenant, provided said sale lasts no longer than three consecutive days in a six-month period. And all sale goods shall be limited to personal property used previously by the occupant. Um, so that basically, yeah, we, we, we talked about this prior, but, um, it's basically just a use of the time limit, so in, you know, in the future, you can regulate where if someone has a yard sale out for more than a three-day weekend. Um, you can, you know, talk to them about it.
Gabe, I, I thought we might have changed the wind energy conversion system, do we add that or edit that or something?
I believe that was already in the bylaws.
I said, why? I, I thought we edited, I thought there was something about a.
I think that was in that, we were looking at the, we were looking at the use table with wind energy.
Yeah.
Um.
In the definition.
Gabe, wow, you're right where you are, because I think Kurt has a comment on this one.
Yeah.
Oh, yeah, so, I. I have a couple of here. I want to talk about under definitions, motor vehicles. And. Open yard. So, your, your, our bylaw currently talks about storage of unregistered motor vehicles. Okay, which is the, the first part of it here, and it says. Prohibited in special permanent, no more than two unregistered motor vehicles assembled or disassembled, okay, that, that's what we got. Um, and then there's some exceptions to the storage of unregistered mo- motor vehicles, so down in D. They'll not apply that are stored within enclosed building designed for use for farming purposes, okay, so we, we made some exceptions for motor vehicles that seem to be appropriate. But we don't define motor vehicle, so you go to Webster's dictionary, it's this, you know, the standard, and it says a vehicle with a motor. Okay. Um, I provided the, um, the Mass General Law, Chapter ninety, language on, on page two. Um. A definition from the zoning dictionary. Um, the millennium edition, it's the only edition that was ever printed, but I happen to have one. And, um, some other stuff about motor vehicles, so I would like to see if the, if the planning board would be disposed to. Um, add a definition, a motor vehicle in section two, and my proposal would be that a motor vehicle. All, or all parts thereof constructed and designed for propulsion by power other than muscle power, including such vehicles. When pulled or towed by another vehicle, including watercraft, construction equipment and tractors. And so, right now. It's clear that a car is a motor vehicle. And a trailer, is that a part thereof a motor vehicle? Well, it could be ours, right? So if somebody's got four trailers in their yards of various types. Um, you know, two unreg- three unregistered motor vehicles, five snowmobile trailers, and they're all in disrepair. You know, so I think I would.
Fourteen excavators on various states.
Um, I'm sorry, which one are you referring that you recommend?
Proposed definite, on the bottom of the first page. First page, okay. Okay.
Randy, can you send that to me when you get the chance?
Yeah, that's, that's what I want to make sure I'm sending you the right one.
Okay, thanks. I think, I think that's, I think it's prudent to include a motor vehicle definition.
Okay, and then on the very last page. Um, in. Yards, right, we have yard front, yard side, yard rear. And un- o- open unoccupied space extending across something, they all start out the same. Okay. Um. Well, what is the definition of an open unoccupied space? I mean, I have a definition of it, I think it's. Pretty clear that it would be, there's nothing there. Okay, but there are some instances where some people have stretched the. Open, so I think a parking lot is an open unoccupied space. You know, some grass, some stuff like that, but, um. Without trying to say, is it a building, is it a structure, is it a, is it a, a, a tuberance, right? Open and unoccupied space, free of any building structure, canopy, or permanently mounted equipment or dispensing devices. That's my suggestion.
Has it, has it caused you a problem in the, in the past, is that?
It's causing problems.
It's not my yard, it's the woods, or?
Yeah, definitely hard to determine, right, you know, what is considered a setback.
Yeah, so, okay, so, right.
Okay. We find the definition makes it easier on Kurt to say, it says right here, you know.
Okay, well, and, and it's not just easier on, on me, it's easier on the applicant to say, is, is this an appropriate thing to be? Now, signs, you know, why didn't say anything about signs? Because signs are their own thing, and they, they're allowed to be located within three feet of the property line. And not subject to the setback, the, the normal setback of a building.
But they are listed under structures.
Yes. Okay, a retaining wall. Would, we have a setback for retaining walls, okay? Yeah, I, I wouldn't call it, you know, I don't think a retaining wall offends this definition. You know, it's, okay, we have a piece of property, we have a retaining wall, we have more property. It's these ancillary things like canopies.
Yeah.
Now, um, some of them can be extensive. You know, they are structures. But they don't have sides, so they're not a building. So I think it's gonna let, lend clarity to, if that's the playing board, if that's the community's intention is, is to provide an open space, free of stuff. Then.
Yeah, I think that, I think that definition makes a lot of sense.
Do I can give you this, babe, in also the one on motor gear?
Yeah, that's, thank you so much, that's, those are, those are two prudent, uh, definitions that I think will serve the board well. Um, some, if we're done with.
Motor vehicle, so sailboat can be a motor vehicle.
Yeah.
They're allowed to have two.
Unregistered.
On the same.
If registered, you can, you can have as many as you want.
Yeah.
Yeah, on, on the same note, I mean, they recently moved, which is a property on, on Food Road. That had a wide collection of boats in their front yard, and their, and cars, so.
On that note.
You know.
I'm sorry, the chairman has the same.
What if I take all my neighbors' boats that are registered and put them in my front yard?
So is that any different than having ten registered cars in your front yard? Oh.
If the raw register.
You're just in, you're good.
Want to start storing boats?
Wow, that.
Prices, prices. Bill needs a place to put a sailboat.
Get a new business venture.
Now, a question back to you, though, have you now created an off-site parking area? Okay. So if they're your cars, your family's cars, I think I have, I can't. So, perform any.
Terms of the gainful profit.
That, yeah, that's where, yeah, I think that's where we get into. Is it now a recreational, recreational vehicle sales storage?
Do we need to say in the exemptions that they could always be farming purposes? Why not nice classic collector cars in a building are exempt?
Well, if they're in the building, they're exempt already, just get the outside.
Yeah, if you have nice collector cars, you're not gonna leave them outside.
I know some buildings in town that have a number of.
But, but, am I reading this wrong? So exemption too, it has to be designed and used for farming.
Hang on.
It has to be one, two, or three? Is it one, or two, or three?
The first part of that, this might reference being outside, though.
Okay, so, in, in our existing bylaw, which is the first page, okay, exemptions. The provisions of subsection A, the top part, shall not apply to any motor vehicle which are one list, this is a list. Stored with an enclosed building. Hey, you can have a hundred of them in an enclosed building. There might be other issues, but on the zoning, you can have a hundred. Designed for farming purposes, okay, if I'm a farmer, we still have some farming activity in town. Right, I can have a bunch of tractors in the yard for, for doing.
So it's one, or two, or three?
Right.
Okay. Good, that's clear to everybody, it's not one, two, and three, it's one and two or three?
It's four or.
It's one.
Or two.
Two or three, but it's not one or two or three. Yes.
It is one or two.
Maybe we should add or.
And or in there.
I mean, I read it, I'm like, why can't you have a nice collector car?
Hey, I just copied and pasted the bylaw.
I mean, I think it's from nineteen seventy-three or eighty-three. Yeah, whatever, it's one or two or three.
Let me. And it may be a format. Well, that's. Five point three. Five point two. No, it's, it's a paragraph in, in the bylaws it is now, and yeah, you could put an or in there if you wanted, but that's, that's way off in another part of the bylaw.
Yeah. No one's pushing.
No.
Yeah.
And I'm not.
Sorry.
It's alright. Bye.
I go on, Gabe.
So I will, uh, when Randy sends me those new definitions, I will, uh, I'll include them in the next revision. Um, I think we're gonna move on to the, uh, district definitions.
If we go back to variances. We didn't change it or anything, and it just says a grant and release from requirements of this bylaw.
Yeah.
Shouldn't say something there as granted by ZBA.
I think that would be in line.
Three, after three was.
Yeah, no, I see. Uh, I think that makes sense of, what does the board, the rest of the board think?
Did, did the town bylaws say that variances by DVA?
The. Bylaw under administration. Addresses. Um. Variances and special permits, um, what section is that? Seven.
Special permits.
I was, I was just looking.
Administration seven point two, granting, granting authority.
Yeah, that would be it.
And then the next one is zoning board of appeals, and then planning board.
Say granting authority, the zoning board of appeals, is the authority for variance, that's, that's where I'm going.
Yeah.
I know it's not spelled out here.
Zoning board of appeals.
I mean, there's no reason why it couldn't be amended, just to add it, so yes, yes.
Powers and, powers of the zoning board of appeals to hear and decide petitions for variances in accordance with chapter forty-eight. That's what.
Okay.
So you could add it, you know, it's just backing up what it says.
Well, I mean, so you know where the grant of release is coming from. And it just can't be you granting or.
By the. Zoning Board of Appeals, which you can, that would be other way. So would that be like?
From here?
I was thinking of the first bylaw, I'm, I'm, you know, on the first line, Gabe.
Yeah.
No, keep going, you're doing fine.
Okay.
That works too.
Yeah.
So.
Okay. Do we want to move on to the district definitions?
Go on, go ahead.
Okay, so, um. In terms of title, we're changing agricultural to rural residential. Um, and, uh, the short name to R sixty, which sort of, you know, puts it in line with R forty and RSE.
Wait, Kurt, you got a question?
Kurt, get a question from you.
So throughout the bylaw. There are, and I can't tell you where they all are. Okay, there are various things that refer to the agricultural zone. Such as maybe a BEP next to the agriculture or residential zone.
Yep.
Has a different setback requirement.
Yep.
Things need squared away.
Either you have to go through the whole bylaw and change everywhere where it refers to that, or you should probably make a statement that says. You know, if, if it's. However, you make that statement, that anywhere, any, anywhere else in this bylaw where the agricultural zone is referred to.
It's now. For it to as a, as a sixty.
Do we want to, do we want to put that in like the warrant? Language, or do we want to put that in the body of the rural residential definition?
I think you should put it in the body of the rural residential definition, so.
So it's in the Bible.
So it's in the Bible. Yeah, you should amend that.
Okay. All right, I will add that, um, so again, um, that's the main, that's the only one getting a title change in section, in, you know, section A. Um, moving on, nothing is changing in, uh, B through D. Um. So, yeah, we have rural residential. Um, we struck to provide for agricultural and lowest density sites. And are replacing that with lowest density residential uses, um, I will add. Any reference in these bylaws to. The agri-cultural zone. Uh. Now. Applies. To the. Rural. Residential zone.
You feel comfortable with that, Kurt?
Yeah.
Okay.
Thank you for bringing that up.
I'll change it to district. All right, um.
Yeah.
Then we, uh, we're looking at risk.
Can I, uh? Just ask about what their definition here on trailer, then, if we were bringing up motor vehicles, I hate to do this.
Well, like motor vehicles included trailers and.
Yeah, should we maybe get rid of this trailer definition, because?
No.
Yeah. What's a landscaping trailer?
If it's unregistered, it's a, consider the motor vehicle for that purpose. Uh, a trailer is. Yeah, so if it's registered, it's.
I mean, falls under the same. It tends to get to meet your children's background.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Falls on the same thing as a motor vehicle.
You couldn't have fourteen.
Me. Yeah, trailer two, if they're registered, we don't care. Yeah. I mean, why, why have a trailer definition at all?
Well, the other thing too, though, is it's historically been in the bylaw.
Yeah.
And, and it may be helpful for.
Yeah.
Pre-existing conditions to have.
Yeah.
The definition of trailer.
But, but I think we're. We're thinking like a travel trailer here, this, by this definition. Not a.
This is not a trailer for you, so isn't that.
Right, and it's roofed, yeah, both. Maybe safe, I don't know, but it, it's not a contractor.
So that would be covered under motor vehicle, though. The contractor's trailer would be.
You say roofed, travel trailer.
Would also, but it would also be.
Yeah, that's funny.
It's a roofed or unroofed, that way it catches both of them, you could have a, a trailer with all your boat, all ATVs, but not.
Yeah.
Being closed trailer.
Right.
I could, I could add or unroof.
But this.
That way, but they're not habitation either.
It's unroofed, unroofed, it wouldn't be for habitation.
Abuse for habitation, business or recreation.
Or use, though.
Business or recreational uses of clever.
I think you're fine. Leave it alone.
Yeah, yeah.
So don't touch roof.
Okay.
Just don't touch trailer, I mean.
That's trailer at all.
Okay.
All right.
Okay.
And that comes up with a problem, though.
Yeah.
We have to start to.
I've met some very creative people. I've met some very creative people.
So moving on to, uh, the district definitions, we're looking at a residential small enterprise. So they struck, uh, appropriate to an existing mill village. Um, and expanded this definition to, uh, you know, small residential. Medium and low density residential uses and small scale, commercial and light industrial uses. Which through landscaping and design or through preservation enhance the natural landscaping and historic environs. At the same time, protecting any existing views, minimizing the visibility of parked cars. Avoiding the appearance of commercial strips as well as congestion in the abutting streets and ways. And retaining the character and quality of life in the rural New England village. So I think, um, this was, this was, this, these definitions were worked on before I was on this project, LeBron. But I, I believe this is just to really, I think there was a desire to sort of basically, you know, echo what's being discussed in the neighborhood business section. To kind of really get into why this is a separate zone from R forty.
Go ahead, Kurt.
So my. Point is enhance the. Natural landscape and historic enrons and at the same time. Okay, I. I don't know what that, what we're trying to accomplish with that statement. Wouldn't this statement maybe be better if you deleted enhanced the natural landscape and historic. And bronze and protect, just say protect the existing views.
Same thing.
Same thing for three and four. I mean, I, I don't.
Okay.
Get the board to nod on that. I am just.
I know, I know, I know. I'm just highlighting. Uh, does the board concur?
I mean, is that something we do with with number four too, or do we just leave that the way it is well?
I would, I would strike it from both of them. I don't know what that's.
Yeah, this, this seems, I don't, I don't know when this definition was adopted, but it does read as pretty convoluted to me.
So where do we start with the deletion portion of it?
I'm just saying, what, what if this thing is all overgrown and they want to do some landscaping on it? Then you don't want to protect the existing view because it's all overgrown with poison ivy. They want to do something. They don't want to protect the existing view. They want to enhance it.
No, that's, uh.
Yeah.
It's a, it's a discussion. I'm not trying to drive the decision here. Offering a different.
Yeah.
Instead of preserve, enhance.
Yeah, I know. Like, don't change how it looks now.
Don't clear cut the whole thing.
Yeah.
So what we're trying to get to?
Do we want to just?
Very small child city.
And.
No, just the hills, neighborhood businesses.
Yeah.
Yeah. Right, I mean, it has the same type of definition.
This is neighborhood business. This is. We got neighborhood business up here and.
Yep. Child city.
Just the children city.
Yeah.
Which is.
I don't think they're checking any views in that John City. Or enhancing.
Why knock the north side?
I'll let you work on that.
So, uh, yeah, how do, how do we want to proceed with this? Who, where do we want to, do we want to cut this or just leave it be?
I think what happened is they did like a little cut and paste of the neighborhood business and.
Yeah.
RSE were similar definitions.
How about we just cut it to retain, like, cut it to minimize a visibility of parked cars? And start from there. So like, just retain this last chunk after you define the development.
That might be a simple way to go.
More like it's do no harm type of.
Yeah, like, so like, yeah, you like minimize the visibility then. I could, yeah, like development within village settings which, you know, minimize bill. Visibility of parked cars, blah, blah, blah.
So, yeah.
Congestion.
So like. Down to existing views if you chop that.
Yeah.
In third line.
That actually fits that. And they can't come up with anything in there.
So the, I, I, on the screen, I highlighted where I think you're talking about cutting. So basically, cut through landscaping. I'm, I'm gonna do these on both. But cut through landscaping to existing views and then basically change the tenses in this section, correct?
Yeah. Instead of minimize, minimizing, you'll say minimize.
Right, right.
Which.
Yeah.
Minimize is the visibility of.
Yeah. But I'll, yeah, I'm not gonna do that here, but I can, I can.
Yeah, yeah.
I'll do it for both sections.
Yeah. That's all right.
Okay. Um, moving on, um.
Did you do the same thing on four?
Yeah.
Yeah, I will. I'm, I'll do it af, I'll do it like, you know, after the meeting.
That, that first paragraph before number one, where we change the definition agriculture to residential. It does have agricultural in that first paragraph in this.
Oh, okay. I'll add that.
Rural residential.
Yeah. Thank you. All right, um, so I'm gonna move on to business enterprise park. You're striking, uh, zoned as industrial parks and compatible in industries to make it. To provide parcels of land where a range of compatible uses are encouraged. Um, such uses, so you're striking industries shall be a butter friendly. Um, and then at the bottom, um. Which offer an opportunity for employment growth and expansion of the tax base. Or a mix of commercial office and multifamily residential uses.
So why?
Go ahead, Kurt.
Why do you want to put residential uses in a business enterprise?
Multi-family.
I think it was to create a commercial on this. Yeah. What do you create up the option?
You think it'll open up too much?
I, I think, yeah, and this is the hard part, correlating that statement with what your uses are. Yeah. In the table. Right, so you're talking about multi-family residential. Residential, okay, and you're allowing. And in BEP, it says no.
Well, two families said yes. Drawing over the first four businesses, switching to SP, and so is one and two family drawings.
Yeah, so, so what is it?
SP.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, but it, it says here, and multifamily residential uses. He in the table, it's marked N.
But one family and two.
I think, I think it's the emphasis on the mix, like the mix of commercial office and multifamily residential.
Oh, okay. Yeah, but by definition, a multifamily building is three or more units.
SP then.
So I'm, there, there may be many views here to an SP.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Yeah, I mean. If we added it here in that definite or the spirit of the definition.
Yeah, I think the whole intent is that we were trying to give people that had BEP properties. More opportunities to develop the property, because maybe you can't do it all. Commercial or business that you could throw in some residential there. And that help offset, you know, the expensive.
Yeah.
And that kind of property.
And that is like the only area with this mixed feeling to it. So maybe just make it SP for multi.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay, well, but we're good with this definition.
Yeah.
Yeah.
Okay. So now we're done with definitions. We're on to the, the fun part.
Have a couple more definitions to add.
Oh.
We have a MRDOD.
Okay, MROD, that's.
It's good, it's an overlay district.
Yeah.
It was in the bylaw. It should be left in the bylaw because it's an existing district. You know what we're talking about, Gabe? It's in.
I'm, I'm pulling it up.
Overlay districts?
Yeah.
We have one drop that was approved years ago as a. The exact name of it, but it was.
Medical.
Yeah.
Something like that.
So.
So that, that is defined, that's defined in section five. Uh, it has a, there's an MROD definition in the, in there.
Okay.
So it's in section five, it's not in these definitions.
Yeah, it's not, because it's like an overlay district, not a.
Okay.
Not a.
M U P D.
What does that stand for?
Looking it up.
M U V D.
Yeah. Oh, multi-use plan developed district.
Oh. Okay, let me pull that up. I'm not seeing that in the, I'm on E code. You have a section?
What did you say again?
Development district.
Do we have an actual place in town that's a earmark for that? Does it, that's what I mean, that they. We create one.
No, I think we have one.
Yeah, I'm not seeing anything in the current bylaws.
No, I, I just looked and.
Are you doing a word search?
Oh, here, it's, um.
I am.
Page two hundred point sixteen, it's under two hundred three dash one.
Hundred three.
Two hundred. So. Yeah, I'm, I mean, I'm on E code. I don't have the paper copy that you have, but I'm, I'm in two hundred three one, which is the same. Uh, the same section that these edits are working off of. I'm not seeing that. I mean, this should be this, this is the same language from E code, so. Unless the E code isn't up to date.
Okay.
Maybe.
I'm gonna let you know.
Maybe what's gonna happen here tonight is that, you know, you're asking Gabe to make a bunch of edits.
Yeah.
This is a public hearing.
Correct.
You may want to leave the public, continue the public hearing to your next meeting, so it can still be open for comment.
Yep.
So that you can make those changes, you know, and find this. I'll work on.
To do that, we can't do that basically. Because. I checked today, we have to have something submitted to the administrator tomorrow. For the board's like, it can be revised, but. If we continue in our public hearing, is that? Change.
No. I, I question, have we, does this document that I support public consumption at this point? Are we rushing this? I know that.
We're rushing at the last minute.
I, we, we've taken a lot of time on it and COVID has pushed things back a little bit, but I, I still feel like we're rushing to get it in. Maybe we do the definitions for this meeting and we do some of the use tables and what we can't do for this on the next one, but. To put everything out there at the town meeting without anybody in the town seeing it.
Nobody is questioned or asked to look at it.
I don't think people even know it's coming in, it's gonna be a lot of.
Been interested.
Yeah.
In the room.
If you're interested, you're interested, you know. If you're not interested, so.
And everybody's, and every, and, and, yeah, and nobody's interested until they are interested.
Exactly.
And that's usually after the fact.
So no matter how long you wait.
Right.
Somebody's gonna get up on town meeting floor and say, this is all news to me.
Yeah.
What do you mean, we have a town meeting?
People were still asking what's being built on twenty, you know.
How did that go?
Honestly, there's a lot of changes that are gonna be made here that are gonna be beneficial throughout. The, the summer and what's gonna take place where if you wait till fall town meeting. You just, you're still gonna be rushed, because now you're gonna have people looking to do stuff.
Yeah.
Where you gotta be pushed to revise the table or send them for a variance.
Well, so, I mean, well, we have two different ways we can handle this, because, you know, if we have a little discrepancy in the definition. The, the board has spent a lot of time on the use table.
Yeah.
Do you feel comfortable with moving forward with use? So, I mean, you could do either or or nothing or, but. Use tables with a lot of changes that were now things that were permitted or on or the other way around. You know, I mean, it's been a lot of time before allowing more uses, which is. That's, I think that's more helpful from a sound standpoint than on, I mean. The definitions are definitely going to help, but if we're not comfortable with submitting them all.
All right, well.
What came first, chicken or egg? Definition.
No, okay, I think they go hand in hand, and I was just suggesting a method and Randy had some other information. And yes, we have to comply with all this open meeting and posting. And the warrant has to be posted and it has to be sufficient to warn the public. So you're allowed to make, you know, less than substantial changes. Right, so it was just as, you know, if the board feels comfortable, I think. You know, and we can gloss, not gloss over, but, you know, that might be something, if we really need to do something, we can make an amendment on the floor. Right, I'm talking about a specific item.
This, I think that, yeah, I agree with you, I mean, the board can make, you know, anybody can make the recommendation that, you know. It's, you know, put on hold till the town meeting. For some reason, we're not comfortable at town meeting. We can keep moving forward.
Get it in one. Get it towards, then if it becomes a point of, if it's rushed.
It could be tabled as a town meeting till the fall, so that we have an opportunity to make any fixes of it after.
Or they could just vote it down, like, it's, it's too rushed. Too rushed, we don't know about it, but yeah. Exactly.
And it's. That's where people go in with it, then. Somebody could make a recommendation to cable it, so it doesn't go down in the way.
Yeah.
So.
I think there's gonna be a lot of explaining that's neat, that's gonna need to be done, why these things changed and why we're doing all this. Who's got a plan that they're trying to sneak through? Yeah, what's the motive? There's gonna be, what's the motive? It's, it's always, you know, part of that. I see the definitions as less controversial. I change it. I used to, like, I think we're helping. I'm, I'm, I feel good with the, the definitions, it's. Use table, yeah, if somebody, when they study it. So can we do it in, can we, can we do it in two separate motions? Is that possible to do the definitions in one?
Yeah, I mean, you can make it, we can submit the whole thing as is.
Yeah.
And then somebody can make a motion to.
Split the article.
Put, yeah. Or on the floor.
Yeah, amend it so that we only approve the definitions that decide and cable the, the users.
Then I would say put them both there.
You just can't add in.
Call it on the floor.
It's going the wrong way, right?
Yeah. Yeah.
I mean, that, if, if the article is set up as one article right now.
Yep.
Certainly proper on the floor for the planning board, right, to get up and say. And the planning board's probably gonna be the one, because you're the sponsor of the article, to make the motion, right? So the motion, you know, fix, fix, and the motions we print shortly before.
Yes.
This, this, we have time.
So you could split, split the motion, I move that the definitions as stated in then and then and then. You know, with the intention of going that, and then my second motion is, is I move that the table be approved as printed.
I mean, we. We can't keep the, continue the public hearing till the next meeting, this is, the warrant's not being printed yet. It's just that now we're on pass at the board selecting meeting, and that's really reverent to a. Hiccup, yeah. Because they wanted everything, even if it was a final version, they want.
Something.
Version.
But if we have that flexibility on the town meeting to split it or whatever, then. Why don't we close the public forum tonight and let the selectmen see it and then just move forward like our intention?
But we wouldn't wanna close the public hearing, would we?
Well, we have to.
We have to.
To get it to the select.
Get it to.
We have to close.
Yeah.
To just move it forward, we have options, we could pull the whole thing as the day of the town meeting.
Yeah, I mean, you should.
Run it, cut real resistance.
And if we were, if you say, you know, a member of the board can say, you know, I recommend, I make, the board makes a motion that we amend the. Warren or the article to only.
Yeah. Okay.
Hold on the. Definitions enough, the usage, for some reason, it was blowing up on.
I agree, it feels rushed, there's a lot here that we're seeing on one. Well, you've seen it, it's just, I'm not sure the public.
Yeah.
They haven't.
They haven't had an easy time to see it. When they come in here and ask about it, they don't see it.
Right.
I'd like to get it online this week, so even if it's not complete, get it out there, provide some links if you're bored.
Look at it tonight, we can get it on the town website tomorrow, get it on Facebook page, you know, get it out.
Circulate it, see it, okay.
Yeah.
That's, that's, I think, necessary, but what, I mean, do you feel good about that?
Yeah.
Close it, circulate it.
Okay.
Right.
So for tonight, how, do we wanna review the use table, or do we wanna?
No, we want to do it, I need to, there's only.
Okay.
There's only a couple of fixes, I think.
Yeah, well, the, yeah, the use table, the, the use table was a lot we changed on the, and and I did notice that massage parlors is still on there, didn't we? Strike that off.
No, I need to game up the definition.
No, we didn't.
I think we tabled a definition because it felt to.
Yeah, I, I, that's, that's, I think that's one thing we need to strike for, I mean, what is a massage parlor? We don't even define it, and I thought we went to. Do they really exist, saying, well, we had, that was therapeutic or.
Right, this is what we had.
Yeah. But did we change, did we change the definition?
That's, that was never wrong.
It may, I may have, it may be excluded, I can.
I mean, it's, it's, it's a, massage parlor is the way it was defined to be restricted was. Illegal, isn't it? I mean, do we need to restrict something that's, are we talking about therapeutic massages? Then that's, that's something different and.
If I, if I recall correctly, the conversation was basically that to do sufficient. Regulation of the massage parlor would require like a separate section of, like, would require a whole bylaw for massage, like, the, the. I, you know, I was, I, I did some research and it seemed like the towns that were doing like a, a modern. Regulation of massage parlors had like a pretty extensive bylaw about it. Um, and not just.
Be a masseuse, like, go through the board and help.
Yeah. I remember we did. I remember seeing, but in, on for recreational uses, it's massage parlors aren't permitted anywhere in town.
Recreational use.
It's, it's under the recreational use category. Massage parlors are not, so what is, you know. Especially not recreational.
So.
I just, I try to confuse it, we've got places that do therapeutic massages all over town.
This is the way I dealt with this question, right? Well, what is a massage parlor? Okay, we're all thinking, you know, of that. Less than stellar facility, okay, can we say that?
Yeah.
P B. But I believe that those people who offer therapeutic massage or massage therapists are the, you know, okay. Fall under the category of a. I just lost track of it, licensed medical practitioner.
Yes, okay.
Okay. Offices of license and medical, of licensed medical practitioners, women into jet, you know, and. That sort of thing, I mean, it's, we have some people that do this, they do. They're small.
License.
Facilities, na 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 na.
So if somebody came to you and said, I wanna open one, then you would just make sure that they're like a licensed.
License, and then they, and then look, look at the table and see if they needed site plan review, or they were going into a building that already had a site plan review.
So I guess, why do we have massage parlors in there as, as a, as a?
My, my guess is, is there's also ano- another line in here that's no across the board. And I, it's, it's like hazardous waste recycling facility is no across the board.
Well, that's a.
Yeah, we have. There's also like electric generating facilities with more than fifty megawatts, that's no across the board.
Oh, I, I, my understanding of those categories, those light categories was in there, so it was clear.
Yeah.
That they're not allowed, so that you didn't try and disguise it as something else.
Right.
Okay, because zoning is prefaced on the fact that if it fits within the table. It's allowed. And you can't predict everything that it, that exists or may exist.
So somebody said they wanna open a massage parlor, that would be a no, but if they want to do massages, they're sure, that would be a, yeah.
Physical.
So that, that's where.
Relaxation, I mean, that's, that's the same thing, yeah, we've got those. Right. So I would. Or, or add in that M is medical, dental, and physical therapy practitioners or something. Because I mean, would PT, are they? Chiropractic, is that, those are medical.
Or are you physical therapy? Besides music, yeah.
Yeah, they're licensed.
But they're licensed.
Yeah. I think this, I think we came to this conclusion a few months ago.
Doug'd love to rehash things. Any decision was worth making, it's worth making twice.
For sure. Um, so I'm gonna share a screen again, um, and we can go through the use table. So, let's just go through this like section by section. Uh, we're looking at changing, um, the yes for, um. Basically, a, you know, livestock parcel over five acres. From a yes in village and CB to an SP, and then an IG and BEP from a yes to a no. For a parcel of five or fewer acres that will remain a no in IG and BEP, a yes in, uh, what's now R sixty and R forty. And then an, uh, R S E and B and CB, we're changing that from a P to an SP, and then V from a P to an N.
Actually, Gabe, the other thing, I think, Jean pointed out today, or somebody pointed out.
Our soup.
The A is.
Yeah. Yeah. I can, yeah, I'll make that change.
All of them.
Yeah.
No, for sure. Um, I just realized that before the meeting, um.
So.
Go ahead, go ahead.
Dustin Mass General Law Forty A, Section Three. Prohibit regulation of agriculture on a parcel of five acres or more.
Correct, it's allowed by right, isn't it?
Yeah. So how can you SP it?
That's why we have it here.
Y all the way across the board.
So, yeah, first line will be Y all the way across the board.
So for those, for those first three lines, just make it Y across the board.
No, the top line, five acres or more.
Just a.
Okay.
Everything will be a Y.
I'll highlight that for later. All right, um. So then we're looking at crops, um, would crops be the same question? Do we wanna split that into five or fewer and five or more, and like retain the Y across the board for five or more? And then make it the SP for five or fewer?
What, just put crops and new and P.
I mean. Kurt, how does that, for your purposes? If somebody wants to raise crops, is it?
Culture. Well. For person consumption on a parcel.
I think you have to make that, for C, I think you have to make that by all, all the way across. Well. Raising of crops for sale or for personal consumption on any parcel of any size, isn't that credited by right?
That's a. Arcticism, well, raising a crops agriculture, agriculture, you know, all that stuff is, is agriculture, which is protected by the Section Three. Language.
So I can't.
So you're one of plants.
So.
Covered by shale. No, marijuana is covered by its own distinct use now.
So raising of crops for personal consumption on any parcel of any size, so if I've got a house in the village district, I can't have it guarded?
I, I don't know why, I, I would, I would go to, to the, the previous.
Five acres or less.
It, it just add crops.
Or crops. Maybe it should just be a Y all the way across, because I agree with Dawn, what if you wanna grow a. Virtual garden and you live in the village district? Lucy's saying you gotta get a special permit to do that.
I, I, I would concur, I would. I, it has, unless this has been an issue, I don't know, I'm, I'm a little confused why this is being introduced.
All right, Ys, right?
So I'll.
Hell, we're.
Yeah.
I know, too.
Yeah. Uh, let's see. One, A, and C.
A and C.
So then on D and E, um, we're looking at indoor commercial horticulture, basically greenhouses. Um, under fif- five hu- fifty thousand square feet permitted. Um, in R sixty, R forty, R S E, and NB, and then special permit elsewhere. And then over fifty thousand square feet is special permit everywhere.
We have to say under fifty thousand square feet total? Just so that. You know.
Total of what?
Total of. Total area of all your.
Five. Law building.
Five greenhouses.
Law greenhouses, because somebody get creative and put up, you know, five fifty thousand square foot greenhouses. To beat the system.
What do you? Is that a problem?
Thank you.
You still have a lot of coverage size that, that, that restricts you. Right, I, I think the intention is to have a total of fifty thousand square, if you had five, ten thousand square foot greenhouses, that's okay. If you had five fifty thousand square foot greenhouses, which is pretty tough to do, uh.
So just say total on property. On parcel, you know, so that they know you can only have a total. We, by which one you fall under.
Well, you're not gonna put a fifty thousand square foot greenhouse on village district.
We can make it under fifty thousand square feet total on a single parcel.
That's.
I think that was the intention of, of what we're going. Yeah, a total on a single parcel.
Okay.
Fifty thousand, fifty thousand square feet is still pretty big.
Yeah.
That's more than an acre, yeah. Um, it was a, the five thousand square feet we wanted, or, or fifty cents? So what's an average greenhouse?
I think the, I think the, I think the, uh. The under fifty thousand is, I believe, from the prior version of that, so. That was just the board basically limiting any greenhouse over fifty thousand square feet. Which, again, is huge.
Well, why not just get rid of D then, and just say if it's over fifty, then you need special. That's, that's, I mean, that's probably fine, you know.
So when your current.
Because I.
In your current zoning, indoor commercial horticulture, horticulture establishments, EG greenhouses, is not limited by size.
Oh, okay.
Across the board, there was no.
Right, that's why this is being.
But I think we wanted to limit it to size so that we didn't get this, you know. You.
We need to establish much larger than what we've talked for the.
I say get rid of D and just, um. Leave B.
Yeah.
I, I don't think it's gonna fall on, on the other ones, but. Um, if it's over fifty thousand square feet, I would think that we'd wanna look at it, yeah.
So do you just wanna change D to Y, just to clarify it for the, for an applicant?
That's.
Like, just change D to Y across the board?
Yeah, that's fine.
Okay. Um, so then moving on to residential uses. Um, only a few changes, uh, multifamily dwellings are being changed from N to SP in NB and CB.
Yeah, Gabe, this is the one where we're gonna make it SP in the BEP now.
Okay.
Max definitely.
And with that, I was just thinking, what about adding the accessory apartments as a special permit in the BEP? To fix that, fill in that mixed zone. If you're allowing two family dwellings.
Or accessory apartments are meant to be, like, accessory, certainly with single family.
Yeah.
Right.
Okay.
Yeah, there's no one family.
Yeah. Okay.
Okay. And then, um, we struck the lodging and boarding houses section. Which, again, is basically like single residence occupancy SROs, which I don't think you guys would want. Then we're looking at dwelling units over first floor business uses, which is basically, uh, when we're talking about mixed use. Um, so we changed P to SP and CB, and then changed N to SP and BEP. Which is basically satisfying that, uh, you know, that mixed use application in BEP. And then, um, in one and two family dwellings, a mix of residential and business uses, we're changing that from N to SP and BEP. Since two family dwellings are allowed in BEP. Since two family dwellings are allowed in BEP.
I have a request that under E. Yep. You had recreational vehicle.
Okay.
And I'm looking at, I'm just now sort of looking at this thing, major residential development, alright, so let's see what we're doing here. So, this is, this is having to think about this, multifamily dwellings, okay, three or more units. When you get to five or more dwelling units developed on a lot in single ownership, it's a major residential development. Okay, so you're allowing with special permit, multifamily dwellings, which could be five or more units with an SP. But you're not allowing a major residential development.
Uh huh.
SP.
Everything is SP and under D also has to be SP under F. As we correct, me if I'm wrong.
For BEP.
Are we opening up can alarms for residential development in the area that we expect in business?
Is that, I mean, primary.
Didn't I say that?
Well, I mean, it's, it's, we always thought of it as a secondary part of, of what was going to go in there, you know, businesses with residential units upstairs, but if, if we, it's, how do you close that door?
This is a bad door to open. There's a need, what's our need? And that's why I think this zoning table is important to kind of make some changes and get ready to go, because when this was established, the needs in the town were a lot different. And again, to go thirty years or twenty-five years without doing any major revisions to it, puts us in the spot where and to try and foresee where you want to be five, ten, fifteen years from now, it was almost impossible, that's why it needs to be living, breathing, amended more often than not, unfortunately, but I think to do, to open the door, I don't think is a terrible thing, because it's easier to say no than to have a developer look at it, and he might have a great proposal.
Sure.
But he sees an N and he walks away.
Leave it as special.
You don't even get, you don't even get to evaluate.
Right, come on in with permit.
So I think the more Ns that are in this table, the more closed off we are to, who knows what we can think about? If I told you two years ago, there's going to be a two point eight million square foot Amazon building coming, would you chuckle? Probably.
We did.
Doggy daycare and a brewery.
Right? I, I mean, so I think to sit here and then try and anticipate and just really run it through is, is a hard place to put yourself in.
So.
And you put in a special permit and, and it gives.
So should everything in F, where, well, everything that was SP and D also be an SP under F?
Do they match? I, I think so, right? I, I'm pointing out right now, there's a conflict.
Yeah, if there are.
I'll make that, I'll make that change, thank you.
Make sure it goes with SP, BEP too.
Yeah, so the three categories under, or four under Ds will also be the same under F.
So you want to look at this for NB, CB and BEP to change it to SP?
BP.
Because otherwise we're going to have a problem.
Alright. Are we good on residential?
Where do apartment buildings fall?
Multifamily dwellings.
Yeah. So, but that's a limit of five?
No. No, it's a major residential development is.
No, that's what you said, multifamily dwellings has a maximum of so many units, I mean. As a maximum cannot, shall not contain more than six dwelling units.
Is that for building?
Yes.
Yeah, you're right here.
Six units.
So it would be a. And your, and your major residential development, which is allowed in by P and AR forty. Does that mean I can do a fifteen unit apartment building in R forty?
What's dwelling units? Dwelling. Now, when I listen to R forty, a subdivision in R forty with more than five dwelling units, that's residential development, what do you think about it?
So you're talking about an apartment building with more than eight units?
Sure.
Do we, do we have that anywhere?
I, I haven't seen it, that's why I'm asking. It, which was pre-zoning.
More than eight?
Okay, so let's say I want to do a mixed use on the property next to CBS and it's going to be thirty thousand square feet, first floor is going to be office, retail. And second floor, I want to do thirty apartments, or maybe I can squeeze three floors, I want to do two floors of apartments. I, I don't see anywhere where that falls. And if it falls under major residential development, then that means I can do that in a sixty or R sixty.
But you can't, you can't do multifamily dwellings in, in, so you can do a major development as long as it's not a multifamily dwelling. You can't do a multifamily dwelling.
So, because in your definition, or your definition of major residential development is five or more dwelling units developed on a lot in single ownership. So if I own thirty acres in the new R sixty zone, why can't I do a thirteen unit apartment building? Under your current zone, that's under current zoning.
Well, wouldn't that be a multifamily dwelling?
No.
It's major residential.
Yeah, I'm trying to feel. As long as, you can do that as long as it's not a multifamily dwelling, so you can build
Up to five.
Sixty single family houses on a, on a R forty, but you can't do a, a multifamily on a R forty. So if you want to do a major residential development and do fifty individual apartments.
Yeah.
That aren't connected, that, that aren't connected.
With everything that's happening, right? Honestly, if you think about it.
The housing's needed there.
Yeah. If you think about, and again, anticipating what's going to need.
You wouldn't be able to, yeah. But, but each dwelling would need to be, one dwelling per sixty thousand square feet. That's all you're allowed in, in our board, so that wouldn't get you much, you can, you can do a housing development.
But what about, I guess back to my initial question, next to CBS, if I want to do apartments like that where it could be seen, where there's a.
Is that allowed anywhere in town?
Yeah.
Just six.
At the moment, no.
No, because it would have to be a hotel or motel and then that it's not a, yeah, dwelling.
So I'm not trying, you guys are doing a lot of stuff, but I think there's a gap there where there's a need for that type of apartment building in town. Especially with new workers coming into town with a, I mean, there's no houses for sale.
There's nothing affordable in town anyways.
No, so, so what can we do to allow that to happen with our current zoning? It is not there.
Well, then, the, I guess the question is, do we want to allow that big development in?
But it doesn't, maybe it doesn't have to be big, but what's a, what's a twelve unit apartment building look like? What's a thirty unit apartment building look like? And it depends on where it is, how big of a parcel it sits on. So it's kind of, I mean, even like you're talking about the greenhouses of fifty thousand square feet, if that's on a forty acre parcel. Who cares? If it's on a five acre parcel, it makes a big difference, it's a, it's a fifth of the land. So I think some of this stuff has to be quantified, like you do with more than so many acres or less. And it just, it leads again to a whole nother discussion. And again, the apartment thing is, I get it was some, but I think there's going to be a need for that, so we should be looking at a way to accommodate that.
Putting it off is a good idea, I, I don't know the answer, because I agree with Peter. Considering the new developments that we have, commercial development, there's a need for housing. And five unit monthly or six unit multifamily buildings aren't going to cut it, a developer's not going to do it because it's not going to be cost effective. You know, they're going to be more, it's going to be a building that houses more units, but it's true, we don't have a provision for that.
Again, just as I look through the table and look at, you know, what can be done here, or what, again, try and anticipate what's coming. There's just, there's a gap for that.
Yeah, I, I, I think it's something we need to look at. Do we do it now or do we do it?
If you're hoping to close your public hearing tonight?
Yeah, it's not going to happen. I don't think we need to, we can, we've got.
Giving the.
We're pushing her version to, to the, for the second saying, you know, subjects still to some minor changes.
I taught, when I talked to the town administrator today, he said we still can do tweaks on it and everything. So I think that we could probably be comfortable having, continuing our public hearing, do a warning. And just.
Give them what we have here.
Give, give them what we have right now.
We still have a lot to cover here, but.
They, they don't need to publish the warning yet, so we, we can submit this out there as a draft even on the website and everything. This is like the multiple version, but.
If we can do it.
Actually, that, what Pete brought up is actually one of the biggest talking points that we're going around town.
Yeah, no, I know, it's, it's.
So.
Yeah.
If we put it off more housing too. We don't want somebody to come up with a solution like forty B housing or something to circumvent the system, so we, we address head on and have something available. I, I, an option available.
I don't think. One with forty B, that's affordable, right?
Correct.
Part of it. Twenty-five percent or twenty percent or something.
Right, but are these people who are coming to town going to qualify for that?
Well, actually, not, yeah, usually it's like sixty to eighty percent, and you get to think about like what houses are showing for is, I think sixty to eighty percent of the income. The residents of town, because I've had that discussion before, another town, and they were making, the town was fighting, I said, you realize everybody that works in this town all qualifies for affordable housing, the range is pretty high.
Some of it is, yeah, okay.
So, in this used table, we've got five, seven, eight more pages to go through, and we're not even through the first page yet, are we going to make it through this tonight or, or are we gonna?
No, we got.
I was going to say, we've got, I think, if people went in the line and, and just, where are you at?
Continue the public hearing and let's look at the, we get it from, I think that we should come up with some, I don't know what the answer is if we're doing that, but it, it probably be wise for us to have some type of option on, you know, a multifamily type usage, better than the definition we have right now. Right, more. Building a power and building five minutes per building, just not cost effective and it's never going to happen, you did. Give people up, I mean, we can do it as special permits, so we can control how it's done, where it's done.
We have more control than with a forty B, it's true.
Would seem to be a missed opportunity to go through all this effort and we don't address one of the biggest things, probably.
Yeah, I mean, I mean, based on all the commercial development.
Put the time in a couple of weeks.
Yeah. Continue it.
Been done before.
Just continue it for your last.
There you go.
You guys are last anyway.
Alright, do we have a motion to continue?
Actually, Mr. Chair, real quick, at a previous meeting, you guys approved the change for commercial energy storage and CB to us.
That was something that was, was going to be talked about tonight, is that on the agenda?
Well, that was the one where it was, no, they had made a special permit in this moving business.
CB.
And it just hasn't been reflected on here.
So, yeah, I think we did say that, that to change that, that.
Yeah, I just.
Yeah.
SP and CD. Correct, that's why I'm making sure that was.
Yeah, that's what, that's, I have that in the current version, and then I also, I, I added that, like with the five megawatt limit, correct?
Yes.
I know that was, there was a five megawatt limit that was discussed.
That's all you need.
How do you know what I need?
If it's for the plan you already have, are you doing freestanding?
I do a motion to continue public hearing.
I'll make a motion to continue the public hearing.
Alright, all those in favor? Hi, alright.
Sorry, we couldn't get you all the way through, Gabe.
Uh, it's okay, I'm sorry it's taking as long as it is, it's a lot of changes.
It's a lot.
Yeah.
A lot of changes.
Alright. Thank you, have a good night.
Alright, next up we got public hearing, East End LLC proposal is only about change, five L Stevens Road, it is currently agriculture. No, it's currently.
Zoning map changes agriculture and will be going to Philly.
It's, is it, is it going from A to B or is it going to be the?
A to B. I see this white. Just changing a little bit of light to purple to match.
Okay, got you, alright, got it, pursuit of match, you're to watch up the forty eighth section five, the child plan, we will hold a public hearing on Wednesday, April sixth, twenty twenty-two, at seven oh five PM, the meeting will be held by a Zoom meeting. Meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, and in person meeting at thirty seven Main Street, Charleston, Mass, one five oh seven. On the request of East End LLC, nine North Main Street, Charleston, Mass, oh one five oh seven, consider amending Charleston zoning map, for a lane located five L Stevens Road here and identifying Charleston's assessments. Map thirty-five block, D lot twelve, by resuming the parcel length from its current zoning designation of agricultural to village, as detailed on the submitted zoning, we strictly vision map. Property will contain approximately ten acres. Specific information in the general guidelines for remote participation by members of the public in the appliance can be found on the Town of Charleston website, www.towncharleston.net. For this meeting, members of the public who wish to listen in or watch me remotely may do so in the following manners. Sphere participation, HTTPS, colon, access, back to Zoom, that you asked, access two one one two nine three two two five seven. Meeting ID two one one two nine three two two five seven, full access one six four six five five eight and six five six. Alright, we have the map in front of us.
Yes, Mr. Chairman.
Yeah.
The applicants requesting the zone change, the portion of the property's property taxes. From two zones, fortunately, it's moving business and fortunately. Agriculture and funding the property is the village zone, so the applicants asking for the portion of the property. This in the agriculture zone should be re-joined as a village zone, would be more appropriate for the property, I, there are other, is that agriculture zones actually landlocked by other zones at this point in time? So this would make it more conforming to the zone district, there are some other laws, but they're not laws owned by this applicant, there's still going to be agriculture, but it's not been approached by them, I mean, willing to do that, we'll probably look at that in the future on a zoning map.
Have they voiced their opinion about the property around them changing?
Nobody has been.
They've been notified?
Do they, do they get notified?
Yeah.
Good.
But nobody's been in to question it or, you know, review it or anything, had no interest in.
Good. No objections from them?
No. So I mean, it's, it's all part of the, you know, the, this landlot, it's a different parts of zoning problem, but that. The zoning map change, there's still some small parcels which, oh, we think the property owners on the other parcels would want to change it, because they, they can't do much on their properties as part of the zone agricultural, but because they haven't approached us yet, we we have to look at our comprehensive map change possibly at our fall, down meeting.
It, it doesn't even conform to the zone.
Yeah, none of the laws do, so it's more appropriate that there, some, either village zone, which is probably the most appropriate zone, is even moving business, the law should conform very well, so the village zone is actually the most appropriate zone for those property. For all, yeah, for all.
Okay.
Alright, any questions from the board?
Any questions from the TV?
Yeah, anyone from the public, have any questions or comments on this proposed zoning change on five L Stevens Road? Alright, hearing none, seeing none.
Make a motion to close the public hearing.
Second.
Alright, all those in favor?
Bye.
Alright.
Vote to make a recommendation.
Yeah, you have a motion at the vote, like the vote to make a recommendation to support this proposed zoning change on five L Stevens Road from agriculture to the village. To support this, uh, proposed zoning change on five L Stevens Road from agriculture to the village.
I'll make the motion.
So move. Second, all right, all those in favor?
I, I.
I, Janice. All right, next up, we got, uh, public hearing for Gary, in our area, Gary Jackson, boards LLC. Um, they still, I think, when, when we get the, uh.
Uh, received revised plans on Monday and it obviously given only a couple of days, Mike Andrew. Hasn't had the opportunity to review the right revised plan, so. That application has not been opened yet, so we just. We haven't opened the public hearing on the application, so.
All right, so we're not going to act on it right now.
Correct.
All right. So, all right, so next up, we had public hearing for Edward Services LLC site plan application, fuel station convenience store, sixteen service road. On the, uh, they wish to continue to May fourth.
Yeah, the, the app, well, the applicant, um, the project manager for the, uh, applicant call we did. Day and asked requested to be continued to the April twentieth meeting, however.
Yep.
Um, they also said they are going to be applying to the, excuse me, Z B A for appearance, which they have not done yet. So the likelihood of them making the twentieth meeting is slim to none, so. Rather than continue with every meeting, we should just put it off to the May fourth.
I'll make a motion, we continue the Edward Services LLC site plan to May fourth. Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
I, unanimous, all right. Approval not required for, uh, which ones up for the Berry Corner Road, Canty.
Excellent. Both applications for Berry Corner Road, which means the first.
Canty is.
We have two.
Uh, good evening, Mr. Chairman. My name is Jeff Stefanic. I'm, uh, the land surveyor for that particular project.
Jeff, thank you and thank you for being patient. I've noticed you were on since we started the meeting, you know, monthly public hearing. Thanks for being patient.
Zoning changes are a passion of mine, so it was fascinating.
Everybody else fell asleep.
Yeah.
For Mr. Canty was.
You're both Berry Corner Road this year. Correct, okay.
What's happening here? Jeff, if you could explain, we got, I, we see the A and I, we got lot one and parcel A. What do you do?
Yeah, this is a piece of property on the north side of Berry Corner Road, uh, owned by the Canty family, who also live at forty-two. They, uh, they're, one of their relatives would like to build a house on lot one, but they'd like to retain. Parcel A, which we label not as a building lot to the rear. So the line down the middle is a new line. Uh, that we propose to, uh. So they can convey lot one to their, uh, relative to pursue a building permit on lot one.
Gotcha. So is there frontage on lot one or?
It's, yeah, it's kind of unusual.
There is frontage. It's kind of an odd shaped lot. It has two pieces of frontage, but the east frontage meets the, uh, minimum requirement.
Gotcha. I see it. Okay.
So the only new line is the line splitting lot one and parcel A.
Any questions from the board? We have a motion to approve the, uh, A and R on Berry Corner Road.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R and Berry Corner Road for the Canty family.
I'll second. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I, unanimous.
Well, thank you all. I'll be in touch about picking up the, uh, Mylar.
You're welcome back anytime for our zoning review. Whatever you like.
I'll be sure, I'll be sure to tune in next time. You bet. Thank you all. Take care.
All right, next up, we got the, uh, Leo on McIntyre. Berry Corner, Berry Corner Road and South River.
Yeah, this is actually, yeah. Probably on Berry Corner Road. A new lot here and here and they actually. So this front of John's.
One sixty-nine.
Road here, that lot, and that lot, and then the frontage over here on Berry Corner Road. Where the lot that where they're cutting the two passes off. So all lots have the proper frontage now. Yeah.
They're all sixty thousand.
Yeah.
That was right here.
Yeah, and then creating.
Three lots out of it.
Three, three lots out of the one lot.
Already be a driveway there.
Always. It gets right here.
So that's not Berry Corner.
Not one sixty-nine.
Yeah. Yeah, so they'll.
That's a very.
Yeah, this one, they'll have to come up once it, I mean, well, once they have any, it's something, but they do have the frontage you either way.
That's a threshold.
You get just enough.
We have a motion to approve the A and R.
I'll make a motion to approve the A and R at fifteen Berry Corner Road for the McIntyre family.
A second. All right, all those in favor?
I.
I.
I, all right, unanimous.
So I think you're. One other item we have.
Minutes for my second.
Yeah. I've had enough. I'm coming six thirty next time too, so you can get a good seat again.
I make a motion to approve the planning board meetings from March second, two thousand twenty-six.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
I.
Hi.
I.
I, unanimous.
I didn't date that other one. I dated this one.
Oh, I, I just dated it, so I didn't forget. Get to the rich who needs. So I will just do, I'll submit what we have for the. By what we've written so far and. It's on the web as a draft.
Yep, yep.
And then, uh, so that is out here. You're not posting it yet, so.
When, when you put it on the website, let me know and I'll put it on the Facebook page and.
Oh.
Just to get. Just get some that.
What do you expect the board of selectmen to do when we give it to them? Do they typically make comments and questions or?
No, no, they probably. Yeah, they're gonna just, okay.
Yeah.
They're not gonna.
They will prove it for the article.
Yeah.
Yeah, all right, that's just formally to get on.
Yeah.
I, I was just wondering, should we be there? Are they gonna have questions?
No, not general.
Yeah, actually, uh, just if you ever receive the agenda that.
Yeah.
The planning board.
Yeah, yeah.
Sixty P M. Session.
Yep.
We're on at six. Thank you for that.
Yeah.
All right.
When we're doing this, I just have a question I just want to throw out there, maybe, maybe not.
Yeah.
When we, the board has changed since when.
Correct.
That was voted.
Yes.
Do the members who are on the board now? Even though they didn't vote?
Yeah.
Should they attend?
Oh, I know I do. I abstain.
Right. Are you starting to attend or you're not gonna attend?
Uh, that's kind of something I think I was thinking about. I'm like, it's kind of a gray area.
I wanted to, I wanted to call ethics tomorrow.
Yeah, because I don't want to have be a.
I didn't want you to call as chair.
Correct.
Because you have abstained, so nobody else is mine. I'll call as a member.
Alicia had the same question.
I don't want to put the town in a compromised position.
Trying to make sure whatever we do is.
Yeah, but can, can Alicia vote on that now? She's, she's not a member. She's.
No, but she, she refused herself, but she wanted to attend the meeting. She questions, can she?
Yeah, right.
Yeah, if you don't, that'd be great if you could.
Yeah, I just want, I had mixed feelings on that, so I thought, you know, they got the efforts, then we just call them up.
Yeah.
And they'll give you an answer.
Yeah.
Okay, as long as I have your permission to call.
Absolutely. Thanks for thinking about that. Did you have one thing before we ended?
I did. I was just curious how you came out, came up with the definitions of commercial energy storage and residential energy storage.
So residential, I think we were thinking of, um, you know, the, the Tesla battery packs. And people.
Says up to or equal to five megawatts.
Yeah, I saw that.
A little bit big for residential.
Residential, because if you want it to, to, for continuity, as you know, master and a lot so ambiguous, everyone gets sued.
So what if it was a, you know, a, a, a six, eight family house that has, that's, could it be that big?
Because I don't know where this is all going, but if you keep it synonymous with what we currently have, we only define large solar. Anything under, anything over two hundred and fifty kilowatts. That's a lot of storage. Homes can only keep like twenty-seven tops. Um, so I think you'll, if you just.
Just define the large one over anything over.
Just don't even talk about residential.
Okay.
If the one thing, with, when we're dealing with the solar and everything, each like Conex box, it's a battery pack, it's one megawatt. So you're basically saying by residential, you get a five of them on.
Well, yeah.
Yeah, so I, I see what you're saying.
How we allow the, the storage right now on large scale solar.
And not do anything.
Even the word commercial is somewhat, because with solar, we have large scale and in the definition it says commercial. So you want to keep things synonymous when you're looking at it, but we allow now one Conex. Uh, battery pack unit for every two megawatts of storage. Because that's how, so I believe one Conex is.
Two, two megawatts of generation.
Right, correct, sorry. Yes, so just so you're, you carry that through all your.
Yeah, okay.
Would you say the one box equals what?
Um, well, how they've been, they came to us, which is how I started diving in, is they wanted, um, one battery for every two megawatts of production. And the battery pack at the time compared to like the one in Sterling is sixty-six thousand with the nylon batteries. Stacking, but it's changing. And then I don't, the, the, the C B district that was just mentioned with Pete. Uh, community business originated because it's businesses that the community frequents.
Yes.
We've really gone crazy if we have so much energy production and storage in C B.
Yeah.
You're gonna lose this opportunity for services for the people that live here.
It is a special permit and the, the idea behind that was on pieces of C B district that we have, such as going down one sixty-nine where there's. Really nothing that's buildable there.
Okay.
It's, it's, it's wasted land that you can't really do anything with.
Yeah.
Why not use it for this, this type of thing? So special permit, that was what was in our mind when, when we.
So with the special permit, all the other towns are dealing with batteries, just like. Solar fields, you need the bonds prior to a building permit. You need visual mitigation. The same rules apply.
Nope, and I would agree with that. I don't want to drive down the road and see a whole bunch of Conex.
We were challenged and we won, so.
And then some people too. If it's too close to a residential home, there are a couple houses mixed in here, so because of the volatility of a. Battery.
Setbacks would be.
Uh, just same setbacks with neighbors and some towns denied it because it was too close to a residential neighborhood and it was a huge park. So same rules are being followed everywhere. Worst of it already, like.
So you just wanted to say large energy storage?
And just.
Yes, and in, in the description, do commercial energy storage.
Get rid of residential.
And don't even touch, because that's the only way when, when we presented this at town meeting, is just to let the people sitting here that wanted solar on their house to relax. We weren't, we weren't touching, so immediately diffuse those people that were like.
All right, thanks, Lloyd, for bringing that up.
So you may just stay here, you know, for, yeah.
How do you do down there?
Thanks. All right, is there anything else you got, Randy? All right, anyone have anything else?
Motion to adjourn?
Second.